Hi, everybody. Welcome. Welcome, everybody. As we look around the audience tonight, we are just so honored to have you all here. And for those of you out in TV land, you'll see what's going on here. But if you can pan the crowd, we have princes, princesses, kings, wizards, jesters. We can relate there. This is such a great audience tonight because we're going to start tonight with our Spotlight. And we are going to start with the Perspectives Choir. And we will kick that off. And then after they do their performance, we have some certificates for them.
Well, thank you. I'm Jeannie Seeley Smith, and I'm the president and CEO of Perspectives. We have been in this community for over 20 years. We are the largest supportive housing program for women and children in Minnesota. And we have five apartment buildings and a campus. So over the 20 years of the program, we've had hundreds of kids go through the St. Louis Park School System. At any given time, we house 53 women and over 100 children. So of those 100 children that we house, about 58 of them are involved in the elementary school. And we have some of them here tonight. This is the first time I've spoken to the school board in 20 years, so I think it's about time. Thank you for having us. As I mentioned, we are the largest program. And the women and children who come to us usually stay with us for about three years. So the kids that are with us are in the school system for that length of time as well. And then we hope that they settle in this great community and stay on. And many have. So I'm going to introduce-- we don't have a lot of time because I know that this is a full agenda. But I'd like to come back sometime and talk more about our program. We gave you this little handout so you have a little kind of quick facts of who we are and what we do, what our demographics are, and as well as our Board of Directors. And on the back of that Board of Directors, you're going to see our new board member, Superintendent Rob Betts, who are very excited to have on our Board of Directors. I'd like to introduce to you Mamie Casey. She is the director of our children's program.
We maybe didn't rehearse that part as well. Okay. Well, as Jeannie said, my name is Mamie Casey, and I'm the director of the children's programs. And we are here tonight-- we have a summer program that's an eight-week program for students all day. And we focus on academics and recreation. But every year, for six years, we have a three-day workshop. And it's a music workshop. And Mr. Jim Papoulis flies all the way in from New York. And during a very short three-day window, we write a song, we produce a song, and then we perform it. And so we just had our first big performance two weeks ago. And then we were invited to come here. This is only 12 of the singers. This song was written by 50 students, kindergarten through fifth grade. And so we're really happy that we get to share that with you tonight. And the name of the song is "I Want to Live My Dream." So we'll take it from here.
That was wonderful, you guys. Thank you very much. Now, what we'd like to do is present certificates to each of the children. And on behalf of the St. Louis Park School Board, it is our pleasure to present certificates to Sachin Akawa. Saachi. Saachi, where are you? My apologies. Congratulations. And Saachi, stay right here because we're going to take a picture. Okay. Wamele. Wa Ma-- okay, Wa Mali Akwa. This one I can do. Corey Barnes. Corey, congratulations. Kenesha Gamble. Oh, Kenesha. Navea Hurd. Navea. Christian McElroy. I'm Christian. Thank you. Great job. Shalexis Mullins. Okay. There's first Shalexis. Christina Nelson. Emma Osorio-Grolki.
Emma.
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 Emma. Thank you, Emma. Kimberly Parkinson. Raul Tawah. Christopher Watts. And a couple of other presentations. Caroline. And we want you in the picture too, Caroline. Mamie Casey, our coordinator. And Jeannie Seeley Smith, the president.
Christopher, let's put you around front, okay?
And parents, if you want to do pictures, feel free. Big smiles, everybody.
Take your certificates away from your faces.
Away from your faces. If you want to see those lovely faces.
Ready on three. I'm going to take two pictures. One, two, three. I'll take one more. Are you ready? One, two. Smile. Three. Perfect. Thank you.
We have invited them to stay to see you guys, but it's getting to be a late night for the kids. So they are going to leave us now. Okay. Next on our Spotlight tonight are some special guests. There's a rumor that there's a play going on around this school for the next couple of weekends. It is entitled "Once Upon a Mattress," and it is just wonderful, so I hear. And we'll give you a chance to prove that to us tonight. So Jody.
Come on up, guys. While they're getting set up, I should mention that this is just the cast. We have over 70 kids involved in this production between the pit orchestra, the set, costumes, sound, and lights. We have a lot of kids involved. These are the kids who we let take a break from the work. The rest of them are down there working on the stage right now. So please keep that in mind. It's a group effort of many, many individuals. We're just going to perform a quick little number called "Opening for a Princess" from the play "Once Upon a Mattress," which is loosely based on the princess and the pea. And this is after the latest princess has failed the test. You guys ready? Take two. Sorry. We're used to rehearsing with the pit orchestra now, so we're a little off our game with the electronic accompaniment. So let's try again.
And get the parents of royal life. None of the ladies are having any. No one is having any. No one is getting any younger. And it's been God knows how long since we had an opening for a princess who's good enough, nice enough, sweet enough, smart enough, rich enough for our princess.
The Christians, the Zionists are all there. And you and Jody stand right here.
We are going to recognize everybody tonight. And the reason is, is the crew does not usually get recognized. So I would like our crew people to come up too. By the way, the crew may be the introverts on the team. And there is a great book out called "Quiet" by Susan Cain. If you Google TED Talk "Introvert," you will get one of the funniest things you've ever seen. So give that a shot, guys. You'll enjoy it. I'm going to call out all the crew members' names. But for those of you who are here, I would like to present those directly, if I may. Ryan Benkert. Brandon Dale. Emma Duda.
Some of these are also pit orchestra members, by the way.
Ooh, ooh, ooh.
In fact, I think these are all pit orchestra members.
It says "crew" on mine. Kate Durkerson. Okay. Tess McQuinlan. All right. Do you think we got them reversed? Do you want--
I think so.
Okay. Well, we're going to change this up then.
You can do a lot of work, too.
Yeah.
You can do a lot. And they're also introverts.
Okay. Charlie Berg. Okay. We're going to separate them out here. Callia Blake. Brenna Cook. John Dirks. Alexander S. Shoshana Freud. Kaitlin Glennon. Andrew Grindel. Nick Heinz. Dana Kuncy. Julia Latcher. Ryan McCanna. Winter Morgan. Anya O'Connor. Claire O'Grady. Jacob Olson. Catherine Peterson. Oh, okay. Sorry. Katie Peterson. Gregory Peterson. Zoe Peterson. Leah Seal Gray. Peregrine Stevens. Lila Swenson. Cedar Thomas. Miranda Van Pilsen Johnson. Joe Vilano. Garrett Wells. And Connor Zinda. That's the crew. As it was once told to me at the Guthrie, unless the crew lights them, you don't see them. Unless the crew plays the sound, you don't hear them. So these are very special people, and the actors really appreciate them. Now, I think we're back to the pit. Okay. Back to the pit. Matthew Melander. Claire Olson. Fanzani Pantazanias.
Panassi Pantazides.
Panassi Pantazias. I get better. Noah Robiner. Leo Scadden. Ben Sixl. Johnny Sumaya Ah. I'm getting there. Melanie Steiner. Alex Sunfel. Joselyn Wandersay. And Mimi Wyland. That's the pit orchestra. And along with the pit orchestra is Pastor Tim Rauk, who has played the piano for us for 17 years. Now, to the ones who get all the glory. Our singers and dancers and onstage people, we cherish you. One of the things that happens is, I had a woman come in and dragging her children out at intermission at one of our plays. And she said, "Well, I thought this was going to be a high school play." Jody and John and the whole crew put on such great plays. She said, "These are professional actors, aren't they?" They are great, aren't they? I like them a lot. And they are our children, and that's the beauty of it. Arden Crucio.
Crucio.
Crucio. From the Wizards.
Arden, congratulations.
Maggie Coleman. Alexis Charles. Allison Kramer. You've got to let her through. Bessie Bealman. Sean Burke. Emmett Bongarts. Genevieve Bone. Matt Acker. Claire Tollis-Rood. Duncan Macklem-Johnson. Carolyn Goodall. Zoe Kadrowski. Cora Iverson. Nick Harkness. Ethan Vogel. Charis Tashamamba. Charis Chiamba. Harry Stephanhagen. Albi Sher. Will Poulter. Ben Mccone. Ann Lambert. Rachel Tollis-Rood. Connor Williams. Emily Weinberg. Daniel Waldever. And Noah Rash. And for some reason, we lost a certificate for Ayanna Washington. And as you can see, they are professionals all. So thank you, one and all. And thank you, Jody, for taking the time out. They are hard at work downstairs. They are in the final tech portion. And this is a lot of work. So back to work, you guys. Thank you.
Thank you for giving us so much of your time. Give us more this weekend at 7:00 on Friday and Saturday, or 2:00 on Sunday.
Jody, is it one weekend or two?
It's two weekends.
Two weekends.
Two weekends. You can see it. This Friday and Saturday is on New York. Next Friday and Saturday. And we are now playing online.
Jody, as long as you're here, we might as well do that on the mic.
I don't like to be mic'd. I'm an actress. I can project. Performances are this Friday and Saturday at 7:00, Sunday at 2:00, and the following weekend at those same times. And we are now selling tickets online. So if you visit the district website, we have a link there for you to pre-purchase tickets for only $10. Thanks and enjoy the show.
I want to make sure I didn't give away all of my National Merit Scholars. Oh, we're good.
Is this the right time for the board and superintendent's musical number?
I think it's a solo from the super.
And they do sing and dance, especially around election time. This is a special night that continues. We've sent them away, but I wish they could stay to see this because this is one of my favorite nights of the year. Graduation's a lot of fun. You guys will enjoy that. But this is the night when we present our National Merit Scholars. They are a special group because when we present this dozen kids tonight, our students, who have done incredibly well in school, have done incredibly well on the PSAT and have shown their skills. These are some very special people. These special people will also introduce their special people. And the reason I love this night so much is we get to honor our teachers. And that's something that all of us on the board enjoy doing. It is-- we just enjoy this night so much because it's the time when our students say thank you to an elementary school teacher, a middle school teacher, and a high school teacher. And there are just some really neat, neat people in this group that you'll meet tonight. Also, what I would ask each of the students to do is to make sure they introduce their parents. So, parents, this is your night too. And on top of that-- and I know you just love-- And on top of that, and I know you just love this. It's a little early, but if you'd tell us where you think you're going to go to college. We'd like to hear that. My daughter once said to me, "Dad, if one more person asks me that, I'm gonna..." I understand, but that's the, we hear such great things tonight from our students, and we're awfully proud of you, and we're proud of the schools that you end up getting into. So, we'd like to hear that from you also. So, with that. Joanne?
Come in. Start us off.
Thank you, Chairperson Richardson, members of the board and Superintendent Mez. I'm here to introduce Mr. Andy Wilkes, who is our gifted and talented and international baccalaureate counselor, who's going to be introducing all the National Merit Scholars tonight.
Thank you. I'd like to start out with a quiz. Is everyone ready? I'm serious, it's a quiz. Ila Tolakamani, Tiananmen Square, the premiere of Seinfeld, The Fall of the Berlin Wall, Rain Man was the best picture. I asked Carly Kragness today, and she could name the year. Can anyone else name the year? 89! Nice job, Mr. Miller. Social Studies Department's coming through. If you go down on the second floor of A hallway, there's a big, long line of plaques that talk about the, all the students that have been National Merit finalists, and semifinalists, and commended scholars. And the reason I bring up 1989, is that's the last time this school has had eight, count them, eight semifinalists. It's a really, really big year. It's unbelievable. I think last year, we had three. And so, we just have a real outpouring of intellectual heft going on with this senior class. Let me talk really quick about the process, and I know you don't really want to listen to me, but we always give this little process speech. But 13 months ago, in October of 2012, all the commended and semifinalists in here can remember this test. The 2 million, I'm sorry, 1.5 million students sat down across the United States and took the PSAT. Of that, and I did the math this afternoon, and I was a literature person, so you have to, if you're going to check my math, it could possibly be wrong. But of that 1.5 million, there's 34,000 commended students. So, that's roughly about 2.2% of everyone that took the PSAT ended up being commended. I see people doing the math right now. And of that 1.5 million, there was 16,000, across this whole country, 16,000 semifinalists. And according to my math, that's about 1%. That's a pretty big accomplishment. If you think about here at Park, we have eight of those students. Out of the 1.5 million, of that 1% that took it, we have it there. After this stage, you know, roughly about, about 16,000 semifinalists, about 15,000 entered the finalist stage. And then, in the end, about 8,000 students out of those 1.5 million that started the whole process received National Merit scholarships. And again, according to my math, that's about one-half of 1%. So, it's a really, really big honor that we have so many students that are part of this process. Now, I was talking to them at the reception, and I was trying to get a volunteer who was willing to do it. We're going to start with the commended scholars, and we'll go on to the semifinalists. And luckily, Lauren McManus was so kind to start us out. So, Lauren, if you'd come up, please.
Hi, I'm Lauren McManus. So, for elementary school, I went to Park Spanish Immersion. It was a great experience. And I chose to talk about my 4th grade teacher, Senorita Puchol, this evening. I just loved her as a teacher, because I actually formed a relationship with her. I wasn't just being taught by her. I actually interacted with her, and we had a good time. We were always joking. And my fondest memory with her was field day, the last day of school on 4th grade. We got into a water balloon fight, and it was just a lot of fun, because usually, you know, teachers don't interact that way with their students. And so, I really enjoyed having that relationship. For junior high, I was on the yellow team, which, for all of you here, you know was the best team. And our science teacher was Mrs. Small. And she made me love science. You know, going through elementary school, we didn't really learn a lot of science, and science was intimidating. And when we got to the junior high, I was so fortunate to have Mrs. Small, because she just made science fun. And it was, she was the funniest teacher I had, I think, to this day. She's just hilarious, and I love when people can make me laugh. And that, combined with learning, was just, it really stuck with me. And even some of the concepts I learned back then, I'm still using today. And I'm really, I'm really glad for that experience. And then, for high school, I decided on Mr. Miller, who was my AP US History teacher last year. And going into that class, I thought, "It's US history. You know, we haven't been a country that long." I didn't think it would be that interesting compared to European history. But I was completely wrong, because Mr. Miller was so passionate in his teaching, that he just made every lesson really exciting, and I would really enjoy listening to him. And the stories he would tell would really help me remember all the dates and the facts. Don't ask me about them now, but... I really just enjoyed that, because it was the first teacher in high school who'd been that passionate, and he really wanted you to succeed and to be involved in the lesson. And he would even, you know, get in your face when you weren't paying attention. And I loved that. And so, you know, I just, it was a great experience, that, too. And then, I'd like to thank my family. My mom's the only one who's here today. Thank you for coming and supporting me. My dad couldn't make it, but I'm thankful for him, too. He's always supported me. And my brother, who couldn't make it either, it's just... Can you stand up? And then, my future plans. I don't really have a top school. I'd really enjoy going to Northwestern. It's on my list. But in college, I plan to double-major in Spanish,
All right, all the rest of you, you need to follow Lauren's example. That was perfect. I was talking to all the semifinalists and the commended, and I was saying TPP. Teachers' Parents Plans. Teachers' Parents Plans. Making sure that they got all three of those things in there. Our second commended scholar is Leah Seal Gray. Leah, if you'd come up, please.
Hello, my name is Leah. Thank you so much for having me tonight. Now, I don't know who's all here, because I've been sucked into the auditorium since 3:30. But my favorite elementary school teacher, or one of many, was Mr. Jansen. And I went to elementary school at Burroughs in Minneapolis, which is where I live. And, you know, in 2nd grade, I hadn't had a lot of school. I didn't really know what it meant to be in school. I didn't really know what it meant to love learning as much as I now do. And Mr. Jansen was incredible, because he had this energy, where you'd walk into his class, and you felt safe, and you felt cared about, and you knew that he knew you. And he really did. He knew his students. He knew what they needed. He knew what troubled them. And he could really meet our needs because of that. He could help us learn. And so, he just excited this incredible passion in me for learning, and for all sorts of things. You know, he was the person who handed me my first garden snake. And sure enough, years later, my very own corn snake would be sitting on my dresser. Because he was able to show us these things. Show us these things, and show us that we loved them. So, that was an incredible experience for me. Now, in middle school, middle school. Middle school, I attended Susan B. Anthony, which is also in Minneapolis. And it was a rough time. But one particular teacher really stands out, and his name was Mr. Haugen. He was my English teacher. Because he just had this knack for coming up with incredibly annoying assignments, like projects, papers, and then never explaining them. That wasn't his style. And so, of course, I, "I like a target to aim at," as my mom once said. So, of course, I was always probing him in class. He'd hand out these papers, he'd tell us. It was like, "Do you want this? Do you want this? Do you want this? Do you want this? What about this?" And in two years that I had him, I never got an explanation. But it was okay, because I really did learn a lot from those projects. I learned a lot about thinking creatively, and thinking differently. About articulating things that are abstract. And so, he gave me a lot of really incredible tools to bring into my high school experience. And he did it in a way that was fun and entertaining, and he even agreed with my opinion sometimes. That didn't happen a lot at 12. So, it was great. Now, I've seen my high school teacher here already. So, Ms. Kragness, you should come up. All right, so she teaches IB History HL, which is a two-year course. So, it begins junior year and ends senior year with graduation, which are some incredibly difficult years for a 17-year-old, 18-year-old, who's going through high school for, hopefully, the first and only time. And, you know, when you're growing into this new level of rigor, to this new level of expectation, it can be hard. And like any human being, I didn't always live up to that challenge. I couldn't complete every assignment. I couldn't ace every single test. And that was a new experience for me, to not, you know... Junior year's a new experience for everyone. But something I really valued about my experience in IB History was that when I made a mistake, Ms. Kragness always told me. And she always told me how to fix it. She never judged me. She never thought I was doing it wrong, or should have done better. It was just like, "Okay, you messed up. Let's learn from this. Let's fix it. Let's teach you a new thing." And because of that, I felt safe. I continue to feel safe. I'm still in her class. There, in a way, I haven't always in other classrooms, and I have taken a lot from the experience of this class, about history, of course, and about being a student, and about being a better student. Parents? All right. So, the Minneapolis crowd just is absent tonight. My parents are Kathleen Seal and Richard Gray, and they have been an incredible, incredible support to me, incredibly loving, and I thank them so much. And I even thank my sister, who sparks off a healthy level of competition of who can get out the door first in the morning. And she's also a student here. And as for college plans, well, I applied to way too many places, which I think is very common. But I'm really deciding between St. Olaf and Macalester currently. And I hope to major in Spanish, or theater, or probably some sort of combination of those two. And then, I intend to go on to grad school and get a master's in elementary education, because I want to be a licensed elementary school teacher for the rest of my life.
And Leah really points to something that's great about Park, is we have students that come from all over the metro, and really enrich this environment. So, we have students that have grown up and gone through the Park system, K through 12. But we also have students that come in in 9th grade, 10th grade, or start at the middle school, and just really make this a rich learning environment. So, it's just really nice to have students like that. Our next commended scholar is Andy Haraldson.
Hi, I'm Andy Haraldson, and I'd just like to start off in saying that there are really just so many great teachers that I've had throughout, just all the way through school. It's really hard choosing just three, and a lot of them have been called up already. So, I'd just like to go off of what Lauren said and thank them, too. But out of the three I chose, the first one was Mrs. Stevens from PSI, who's where I went to elementary school. She was just such a fun teacher to have, even though I only had her for one year, and a lot of people had her for two. But that year was probably one of my favorite experiences in school. She was always such a fun person, always making things interesting, even things you wouldn't normally consider fun, like grammar and stuff like that. Every day was always just really fun, and she always got everyone involved and made you feel just special, and it was really just a happy experience. For junior high, I chose my 8th grade geometry teacher, Mr. Dillenberger. I don't really know how I would have gotten through this without him. It was, it wasn't really my strongest class, but with, without, without all of the... Just the way he taught, he made everyone feel like together. Without, we had a really big class that year, like a record size for geometry. And he made sure everyone was on top of everything and understanding the material. And you could always approach him for help, and he would always be really willing to help explain something to you if you didn't get it. And it was just a really fun year for math. And for high school, I chose Mrs. Nora. So, I had last year and also have this year. And she's just a really, really great person. She's really similar to Mrs. Stevens. That might be why I chose her, too. But she's always, she always just makes you feel really involved. She really talks to you one-on-one, makes everyone feel involved. She greets everyone at the door, makes sure you have a great day every time, speaks highly of everyone. And it's been a great year so far, and I hope it will be for the rest of the year. And I'd also like to thank my parents. My mom is here. I don't think my dad could... Oh, he made it. Thanks to them for helping, supporting me, and pushed me to do well throughout high school. And I'm currently in the process of applying to schools, mostly in the upper Midwest, like U of M, Madison, Northwestern. I don't really know where I'm going to end up or where I'm going to go,
Our next commended scholar is Daniel Voight.
Hey, so I'm Daniel Voight. I went to PSI for elementary school, and the teacher I chose, who had like the biggest impact on me, was Senora Caballero. She unfortunately can't be here, because she's in Spain right now. She went back to live with her family in Spain. But I think the reason that she had such a big impact on me was she was the first teacher that I really connected with, more in like an adult fashion, less of like a little elementary school kid sort of fashion. She was the first teacher where I was actually really like able to like talk to and hold a conversation with, that wasn't just like about school stuff, stuff like that. So, it was the first time I really formed a personal connection with like a teacher or anyone who, like, an adult, really, other than family. And so, I'd like to thank her. And then, for middle school, the teacher I'd... And then for middle school, the teacher I chose was Mr. Pollock. He was my language arts teacher and my oral time teacher, which was kind of like homeroom, I guess. And I'd like to thank him because through most of my life, language arts was never really my strong suit, and he was the first teacher who really got me involved in it. And he helped, like staying after with me, things like that, he really helped me through it. And honestly, like since it's kind of like a PSAT thing, he was one of the bigger influences on like the PSAT because like he really helped me through like the part of like school that I needed the most help with. So, I'd like to thank Mr. Pollock. Oh, and he left for China, actually, so, yeah, so that's why he's not here. And then for high school, I would like to thank Mr. Miller. And like Lauren said before, Mr. Miller is probably the most passionate history teacher I have ever met. And honestly, he made A push fun. Like without him, A push would have been a class I had to sit to, sit through every day. But with having Mr. Miller as a teacher made it a class I was excited to go to and excited to hear lectures. And I'd like to thank you very much. Okay, so my parents are Judy and Chris Voight. Just my mom's here today, right there. And they've been a huge part of my life. They are definitely the reason I got a commendation, like entirely. They've always been pushing me, always been trying to make me do better and stuff like that, and I thank you very much. Okay. As far as plans go, I'm not really best plans guy. So, just so I could stop putting undecided on the little like career choice box, I think I want to go into something sciency. That's about as far as I got there. And then my colleges I'm looking at, I think like the two main choices are Madison and Saint Olaf, like right now. I don't know, completely different schools, kind of opposite ends of the spectrum, but I think both of them are good schools and places I would love to go.
Our final commended scholar, Emma Herzog, was not able to be here tonight, and I know she would enjoy the recognition, but unfortunately, she can't be here. So, the commended scholars, remember, that's the top thirty-four thousand, so that top 2%. Now, we're getting ready to go into the semifinalists. And part of the semifinalist stage, what they have to do is they have to make sure they take an SAT, and then we do a big, long, long application for them, and they move on to that finalist stage. And so, remember, those top sixteen thousand out of that 1.5 million, that's where that pool that today's semifinalists are coming from. And typically, about fifteen thousand of those, or you know, fifteen thousand of about those sixteen thousand top students will move on to that finalist stage. And so, we'll know about that come around February, and about March, we'll start to actually know about the scholarships. But it's a process that goes on and on and on and on. And again, I went around to the semifinalists, and I was asking, "Do you want to go first? Do you want to go first? Do you want to go first?" And luckily, Noah, Noah Betts Richman, agreed to be our first person. Noah?
Hi, I'm Noah Betts Richman. So, the first teacher I'd like to recognize is my second-grade teacher from the Minneapolis Jewish Day School, Mrs. Hunnigs. So, back in elementary school, and this may still be true today, I was a pretty talkative kid. I would talk a lot in class, I was very energetic. And so, in a lot of classes, I was kind of seen as a distraction. But Mrs. Hunnigs was the first teacher who really saw that that was really my passion for learning, and that I really needed to be met with a challenge. And so, she was able to, you know, give me a lot of opportunities, a lot of reading, a lot of stuff like that, and really show me how great learning can be. And so, that was, you know, a very inspirational experience back in elementary school that's kind of continued through my education today. So, I thank you, Mrs. Hunnigs. From the junior high, I'd like to thank Mr. Myers, who was my eighth-grade science teacher. Going into eighth grade, I had actually just moved back to the United States after living in Costa Rica for four years. So, it was a very daunting experience to come back into middle school after living outside of the country in a school that really only had about twenty people in it. And so, my science class that year was bigger than my entire school in Costa Rica. So, my class with Mr. Myers was really my first experience having a real US-style classroom. And so, it really set the stage for, you know, what ended up being my entire high school experience. It really showed me the type of, you know, hard work you need to do to keep up in a class like that. And so, you know, that's kind of stuck with me throughout high school, showed me, you know, what I needed to do, and it really got me back on the ground after coming back from Costa Rica. So, it was, it was really great to have that kind of experience. So, thank you, Mr. Myers. Lastly, from high school, I'd like to thank Mrs. Kregness. Mrs. I've had Mrs. Kregness as a social studies teacher for three of my four years in high school, so she's been very influential on my education. The first class I had her for was honors civics in ninth grade, and that was really the first class that taught me how interesting social studies can be. It's really kind of fueled my passion for social studies as one of my favorite subjects throughout high school. We learned all sorts of stuff about government and politics and stuff like that, and it kind of motivated me to take more social studies classes, you know, more challenging ones. And so, now having her for IB History, it's kind of continued to be something I really enjoy. And then she's also led me through last year the History Day competition, which Mrs. Jeroz was also here, was the first one to show me about, but Mrs. Kregness helped me with that. And so, it's just been a great opportunity to really find out how much I enjoy history and, you know, how it can be an area that I really enjoy. So, thank you, Mrs. Kregness. Both of my parents are here, Robert Richman and Betts, and they've been so supportive throughout my education, especially in these past few months as I've been applying to college. So, really, I'm really glad to have them. So, thank you, guys. In terms of future plans, I just applied to Amherst College, so I'm crossing my fingers for that. And in college, I think I'd like to study something in the liberal arts. I've been thinking about philosophy.
Now, Carter is going to start a long line of, we have about three students that chose Anne Jeroz, and you may have seen her down at the reception, but she had to unfortunately take off to a PTO meeting at her, at her new job. But, you know, one of the things that's, that's interesting about this class is that there's so many students that they were the last Jeroz class, and so, it was a sophomore kind of rite of passage. I always called it kind of like a Marine Corps boot camp experience. And so, they are the survivors, the last generation. And so, Carter, again, I apologize that Anne couldn't be here, and she felt really upset. But Carter Green, our next semifinalist.
Hi, yes, so I'm Carter Green, and for elementary school, I went to PSI. And I'd like to thank my first and fourth-grade teacher, Senorita Napier, who I don't believe is here tonight. And in first grade, I really enjoyed having Senorita Napier because first grade is the first year where it's a full day of school, and she was always such a friendly and kind teacher that I really, it really helped adjust to from the half to the full day of school. And in fourth grade, I had her again, and what I remember from fourth grade is that we, that was the year we learned about the state capitals, we memorized those, and that was really when I started to be interested in geography, and ever since, I've always loved maps and things like that. So, I'd like to thank her. And then from junior high, I'd like to thank my math teacher, Mr. Dillenberger. Mr. Dillenberger was my math teacher for three years in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and I really enjoyed having him as my math teacher because he was always so great at understanding concepts, which seemed difficult at the time, but after he was done explaining them, I felt confident that I knew, that I understood them. And he always, he always had great jokes and stories about his feats, like how he created the game Oregon Trail. So, that was, that always made the class enjoyable. So, thank you. Lastly, I'd like to thank my AP Euro teacher, Anne Jeroz, who, like Mr. Wilkes said, had to leave. But I really enjoyed AP Euro and having Mr. Jeroz because, well, one, it was a very hard class, and it, I think, more than any, more than any other class I've taken, it prepared me for the second half of high school and the type of work I'd have to do. But also, we had fun in that class, whether it would be Anne Jeroz's podcasts about, where she would reenact Martin Luther, his ninety-five theses, or Catherine de Medici, or ranting about Marxism. It was, we had a good time in her class, and I always enjoyed that. So, thank you.
So, my parents are Bonnie Carlson-Green and Martin Green, and only my mom is here tonight. And I'd like to thank both of them for just being very supportive and helping me whenever I was stressed or needed help with anything related to school. So, thank you. And then plans? Okay. As for plans, I've been applying to colleges, just like everyone else, but I've also been looking at doing a year abroad next year. So, I've been looking at either going to Spain, or Italy, or someplace like that next year for, to learn more about different cultures. After I returned from Europe this summer, I was, I've just been really interested in spending some time in a different country for some time, so.
Declan?
In elementary school, for fifth and sixth grade, I had Mike Farrell, who I haven't seen here tonight. But he, well, okay, I was, in kindergarten, I didn't know how to read. It took me a little while, longer than most, and I was in a reading group because I wasn't very good at it when I was in second grade, and I didn't realize I wasn't good at it. But he made me enjoy reading a lot more, and I do a lot more now. Just introduced me to good books, and he also encouraged my writing. He gave me a nice little journal to write in, just out of the blue. He made class really fun, and I enjoyed going to school. He was just a very good teacher. The teacher that I chose for junior high is Lynn Rayner, who also, who couldn't be here tonight, but she actually taught me art in school from, I think, fourth to seventh grade. And then in the summer, I've taken an art class with her, just, it's with like one other kid, it's pretty individual, since sixth grade up till now. So, I still see her pretty often. And she really encouraged my creativity, and just has been a good support for me and always interested to hear what I have to say, whether it is rambling or not, which And for high school, I chose my IB chemistry teacher, Mrs. Magdal, who is making history tonight as the first chemistry teacher. So, I've always found, you know, science interesting, I think, but I wasn't very involved in it. And, you know, I didn't actively seek out things to read about it before, but in IB chemistry, she, well, Mrs. Magdal really got me more involved, interested in science. She got me to join Science Olympiad, like would talk to me every day after class, give me candy. And she also encouraged sort of leadership skills. She asked me if I wanted to be captain of Science Olympiad. She was the first, she was the person who suggested that. I hadn't really considered it before then, but I have been, I'm in second year now. And she just, it was really easy to learn chemistry with her. And she's, yeah. Parents, I'm looking at you, too. Kristy Patton and John Frugman. I think they did something right. I have fond memories of childhood, and it's a very comfortable home, and, yeah. Thank you, guys. Plans? College? Probably Lawrence University. I have not applied, but I'm in the process. It's in Wisconsin, because probably most people don't know where that is. But I think I'll probably get accepted. But I want to major in biology of some sort. Don't know exactly what variety, but, yeah.
Simon Frugman.
Okay, so for my first teacher, I also happened to choose the same teacher as Declan, which is Mike Farrell, who, he basically taught kind of an artsy version of fifth and sixth grade. That was, that was really enjoyable for me, and basically, the huge thing he stressed was creativity and open-mindedness. So, I think those two years that I was in the merge classes, they really shaped me for the future, and today, the, yeah. For junior high, I have chosen Scott Myers, who is the science teacher. And junior high, my first year, I didn't do too great, and junior high was just... And junior high was just eh overall, but he guided me through the light. And one specific memory was some submarine project for science after school, and then he kind of noticed that I came out of my shell or something. And that was, I remember that to this day. And for high school, I have chosen Alan Wohacka. And he taught for ninth grade, AP Environmental Science. And that was a really, it was a fun class for me. And it was, high school, it was, I mean, it was for everyone, a hard transition, and it was an AP class in ninth grade, so that was significant. And his objectivious teaching methods, they helped to guide me into the world of high school. And as a result, I've become a better person. So, thank you, Mr. Allen. And I have two parents, Mom and Dad. And for plans, probably college, or, I mean, yes, college, which I haven't applied, but probably somewhere nearby, like the U of M, or St. Olaf, or Mac, or something. That's, yes.
Brenna, I know you've been looking forward to it.
So I moved to St. Louis Park in sixth grade, and there were a lot of changes, and I just remembered a whole, I guess, kind of overwhelmed with everything. But it wound up being kind of a turning point year in a different way, too, because I had Mr. Eichler that year as my teacher. And he was, he kind of brought a different way of learning, or introduced me to a different way of learning. Because that year, he had all these, he had this set of books that we read as a class, things like To Kill a Mockingbird, and we read Parts of Burying My Heart at Wounded Knee. And it was really a lot of learning about things that we hadn't really talked about before in school. I'd always been someone who liked school, but it didn't seem as much like we were talking about things that mattered beyond the classroom, other than, you know, calculating the tax on a receipt at a restaurant. And so we started talking about these things that were more broader issues. And through that, I kind of got to know my classmates more, and I also got to know, just thinking in a different way. So that, to me, was really powerful, and kind of led through the rest of my schooling, I guess. So, yeah, that was my first experience with that. And then, in junior high, I had Mrs. Small for science. For that, it just seemed like every day she had a smile on her face, or some sort of little joke, that even if she didn't make it to the whole class, she just had some comment for someone, and it made class really enjoyable and approachable. But then there is also, for science, she had so many different things, like little ways to remember something, or some sort of a diagram. I remember one time we pulled out like this moonlight, and sometimes I still remember it, and I'm trying to figure out, is the moon waxing or waning? So it's just the little things like that that made the class more interesting, and different ways to remember it more. So I appreciate that. In 10th grade, I had Jurwitz for European History. And like Carter said, there was a whole lot of, like, she's very passionate, and she had all these different ways of showing us different things. But not only did she dress up, she encouraged us to as well. And through that, by the beginning of the year, some of our summer homework was to make these projects. And I remember we were all standing up there with our presentations, trying to figure out how we're supposed to be creative, but we're all pointing at PowerPoints. But by the end of the year, you know, we're making music videos, or we're doing skits to show our classmates about whatever we were presenting on. And that really made us think about how the, a different way to look at the material again, and to display it to our classmates, so it was more interactive. So I thought those together just kind of made it a nice experience. Then, my parents here, Karen Lauren, they, yeah, they look super. Just been super supportive through a lot of things, but they also remind me to stop sometimes and relax a little bit, which is important, too. And then, through that, I also have a whole network of family, friends, and family beyond that, too. So, thanks. And then, next year, I want to look into studying biology, to go into research, and
Our next two semifinalists, and we'll start with Dana, then get to Janet, but both came back to Park in ninth grade from being at Dimensions Academy in Bloomington. And the two people that they nominated from that middle school experience that come back were unable to attend. And one of the teachers, Dana's teacher, wrote us a really brief email, and I'd just like to read it, because it kind of gets at to what I think would be said. She wrote, "My name is Patty Williams. I teach at Dimensions Academy Seminar Class and Reading at Oak Grove Middle School in Bloomington. Dana Councilman was one of my students, and she invited me as a guest to her celebration on Tuesday. I'm not able to attend. Dana was a curious, thoughtful student who deserves to be a National Merit Scholar. She was an analytical thinker who added deep insights to class discussions. I remember her vividly as a student who questioned and challenged different points of view with respect. I'm so proud of her achievement and feel so privileged to have been part of her education." Janet Holmes wanted one of my friends, Mrs. Jolynn King, to be at her celebration. Jolynn passed away over a year ago, and would have loved knowing Janet thought of her so highly. Jolynn was an inspiration to her students. She loved literature and loved to share her favorite books with her students. And Janet was another one of my students, and I'm touched she chose Jolynn King as one of her memorable teachers. But first up is Dana.
Hi, I'm Dana Councilman. First, I'd kind of like to echo what some other people have been saying. There are just so many amazing teachers here, especially at the high school. I know when Mr. Wilks asked me to choose one teacher at the high school level that I wanted to recognize, it was an awkward few-minute silence, because I couldn't actually just choose one. So, in elementary school, I went to PSI through fourth grade, and I was kind of not one of those kids in elementary school who really loved school. For whatever reason, I never really felt engaged. And I loved reading, however, I never felt like this passion was recognized, possibly because I went to a Spanish immersion school. This completely changed when I started third grade. Senora Baldwin encouraged my passion for reading by encouraging me to read more numerous and diverse books than I'd read before, and for the first time, I felt engaged in school. To this day, reading is one of my favorite pastimes. In addition to reading for pleasure, my willingness to read has served me well in numerous research projects, both for school and debate. I credit Senora Baldwin for the fact that my passion for reading has remained with me all these years. So, thank you. So, in Bloomington, sixth grade is middle school. So the sixth-grade class, known as seminar, was one of the most unique educational experiences I've ever had. While in middle school, classes can often simply be like memorization, or learning basic things that you'll end up relearning in high school anyway, seminar was one of the complete opposite. As sixth graders, we learned about things like philosophy, Greek mythology, some of the greatest minds in history like Albert Einstein, Gandhi. In retrospect, I marvel at Mrs. Williams' ability to get us to work at such a high level. We read philosophy books, particularly one called Sophie's World, that was probably way too advanced for sixth graders, and were able to understand and learn from them. Most of all, we learned how to think. While many of our classes would end up in heated debates about various topics, but from politics to ethics, there was always an academic purpose to these discussions. If you ask any of my middle school classmates, they will all remember sixth-grade seminar, mostly because of the challenge and how it challenged us to think. However, this class could not just be taught by any teacher, it was Mrs. Williams' perfect combination of kindness and willingness to challenge us that allowed us to reach such So, high school, my teacher's also Mrs. Jurwitz. In ninth grade, I ended up in AP European History. As anyone who's taken AP Euro can tell you, Mrs. Jurwitz is one of the most intense teachers at the high school. And as a ninth grader, I was very intimidated. It was a rough adjustment, however, it's able to succeed in part because of Mrs. Jurwitz's intense teaching methods. Also, sometimes, hand alongs people said, "I have vivid memories of burning Guy Fawkes' effigy, of Jurwitz marching around the room to the French National Anthem." In retrospect, no other high school class has caused me to grow so much intellectually. I learned both how to manage lots of homework without going completely crazy, and also how to write effective essays, both of which have been invaluable skills throughout high school. Most of all, I learned how to handle criticism and failure, and how to turn both into opportunities for intellectual growth. I can honestly say that AP Euro is one of the best classes I've ever taken. Okay, parents, Dave and Robyn Councilman, they've been really supportive. Yeah, thank you so much. You've been really supportive. You've handled a lot of my insanity over the years, including like 11:00 PM panic attacks from like the printer stopping working, things like that. I've always been very supportive. So, plans? I applied early admission to the University of Chicago. Some of my other top schools are American University and George Washington University, both in Washington DC. I plan on studying international relations, and my dream job as of now is to work for
Our next semifinalist is Janet Holmes.
Hi. Okay, so before I start, I would actually really like to thank Dave and Robyn Councilman for driving me to school every morning for four years. And, okay, so starting out in elementary school, from what my parents have told me, I don't remember this, but apparently, the day I came home from kindergarten, the first day, I called it sitting school. Because I also got in trouble for trying to do headstands in kindergarten while the teacher was talking. But in third grade was the first time that I really felt like it was not sitting school. And that's thanks to my third-grade teacher, Ms. Bee Hun. She, oh my gosh, I don't even, I don't even really know where to begin. My hands are shaking, which is sort of weird, so I'm having issues reading this note card. Well, I remember, especially, I always loved math, always. And I'm always feeling really, really bored, because I could not stand doing addition and subtraction, because I know it's necessary, and now I'm not very good at it, but it's, but I was really bored. And so then, I remember being in her class, and she noticed, like, really quickly. And so she let me and Thomas Druff, who I don't know if he's still here right now, right over there, go out with my dad and work on other number systems and try to learn them, which was crazy amazing, and I loved it. And I would also like to thank her for understanding my dad's sense of humor, who volunteered a lot for our class, because that's a very unique gift. And as many of you know, yes, clapping for that. But, yeah, and also, she taught us how to make paper cranes. And I got into origami a ridiculous amount after that, and I literally spent probably thousands of dollars on origami paper by now. And so, it was really, really fantastic to learn how to do that. And there's so many other things that I'm definitely forgetting and will remember after I finish this, so, thank you. And my middle school teacher, Ms. King, she died of complications from surgery to take out a brain tumor a few years ago. I'm going to cry, and it's going to be so awkward, and I'm very, very sorry. This is going to be really awkward, I'm very sorry. So she got me into Lord of the Rings, because she had this massive crush on Viggo Mortensen. So I remember that was the first time I've loved them ever since. And she also was able to appreciate movies, because most English teachers, no offense to any English teachers out there, but all the English teachers that I had up to that point had this extreme dislike of movies, and thought that they weren't as good as books, which is a lot of times true. But I remember she showed us The Count of Monte Cristo, the 2001 version, that while it's not like the book, she really appreciated it. And she was absolutely hilarious. And she also, I read the first Ayn Rand book in her class, who I disagree with everything that Ayn Rand says, but it was extremely, extremely, like, amazing to get to read that, even though I think it was a little mature for me at the time. And really, Ms. King was the first teacher to make me excited about English, because before, I really couldn't have cared less. I mean, like, I never understood the point of symbolism. It was all the same to me. The red shoe doesn't make any difference from if the kid was wearing a white shoe, or a red shoe, or a blue shoe, it didn't matter. And so she, for the first time, really made me like realize that it actually mattered, that there was a red shoe versus a blue shoe versus a white shoe, and it sounds like Dr. Seuss. But it was, she, she made English so much fun, and I learned so much in her class. And then, high school teacher, who also cannot be here today, was Mr. Redmond. And, okay, so he's, he doesn't teach debate anymore, because they don't have it for some unknown reason, but I remember taking debate, because I thought, haha, extracurricular, it's going to be easy, which is the stupidest reason ever, to take an extracurricular, because it tends not to be easy. And it was not easy at all, but it was wonderful, and absolutely hysterical a lot of times. We had some rather interesting moments in that class. And I really learned a lot without having a ridiculous amount of outside work, which is something that I especially, as a senior, appreciate a lot, as I can imagine other seniors do right here. But he was also very encouraging about everything I did, even if I debated weirdly, and some words didn't come out that were actual words. He would just smile and let me keep talking, which is a really big thing. And he laughed at my jokes, which can be terrible, as any of my friends can tell you. And he was generally just a wonderful person. Like, I actually have him for study hall this semester. I remember, I don't sleep that much, and so I was like fast asleep on a desk during study hall, and he came over and handed me a bottle of water. And it was, for some reason, it was like amazing, because it woke me up, and it made my day so much better. But he always just did stuff like that. That's just who he is, and he's always just a ridiculously nice person. And really quickly, before I thank my beautiful parents, I'd like to thank Mr. Wilks, who has done a ridiculous amount for me. And then I'd like to thank my parents over there, Irene Elkins and David Holmes. They both looked incredibly unhappy to be standing up in front of people right there. They're wonderful people, and I would They're wonderful people and I would definitely not be going to college without them, because they've helped me so much with applications. I probably would have said no and just knocked on the comment app and lived in a box as a hobo somewhere. And so, I have them to thank for so much and I love them so much. Future plans? I don't know. I really don't know. I want to go to Case Western Reserve, seems like a really, really good school. And it was really pretty when I visited it. And, yeah, I don't know what I'm gonna do, I really don't. I mean, I could end up working at Starbucks for the rest of my life. And we just don't know. So, if you find me in about 30 years, you will, and so will I, so, otherwise, I have no idea.
Mr. Wilks, this is just weird without having Mr. Wilson in this picture. We're gonna get one after all the students send us to Wilks. My battery's being low, so we're almost... Thank you.
And our final semi-finalists, can you say that? Well, okay, it is Emma Weisner. Emma, and after Emma's done, could we have all the commended and semi-finalists come up? We're gonna take a big, huge group picture, so, Emma?
Hello, everyone, I'm Emma. Okay, so for my elementary school teacher, I chose Mr. Fredrickson. I went to Peter Hobart and he was my teacher for second and third grade, I was in the vital So, although I spent 50% of my time in second and third grade unsuccessfully trying to get Noah Fortmeyer to fall in love with me, I spent the other 50% actually learning. Mr. Fredrickson was the first teacher I ever had that taught me something other than typical elementary school things. While all the other second grade classes were learning how to walk with scissors, my class was learning how to take care of crayfish, listening to Mr. F sing opera with our music teacher, and learning firsthand what prejudice felt like on Martin Luther King Day. I was annoyingly vocal as an elementary schooler, and unlike some other teachers, Mr. F encouraged that. When he told us that we couldn't wear bandanas in class, I gave him a long-winded note demanding that he change his policy, and he actually addressed this issue to the class, instead of just brushing it off as my misplaced aggression, which it definitely was. Mr. Fredrickson was a great teacher and he really seriously cared about his students, probably more than any other teacher I've ever had, so, thank you. The next teacher that had a big impact on my life was my middle school theater teacher, I left the district after third grade and went to Fair School, which was definitely the best five years of my life, I peaked in eighth grade, so, I came crashing down after middle school. My self-esteem was weirdly high when I went to Fair and a big part of that was due to my involvement in theater. Mr. Heg taught me about acting and improvisation and helped me discover my sense of humor. Even though my humor makes 90% of people uncomfortable, it allows me to take myself less seriously and put things in perspective. From Mr. Heg, I learned that there's more to life than being good at school. Going to an art school in a community that valued creativity and humor, I learned that being school smart is good, but doing something you love is better. Mr. Heg helped me find an outlet that wasn't school and that's something I'll carry with me for the rest of my life. And then, the last teacher I chose from high school is my Ivy History teacher, Ms. Kregness. So, coming from a middle school that valued creativity and art, it's been difficult for me to accept that learning has to be sitting in a desk, staring straight ahead, being quiet and taking notes. Ms. Kregness, my history teacher, teaches the one class I truly look forward to every day, even when I have a terms test. It's because of her class that I fell in love with the subject for the first time. The way she teaches it, I feel like I'm learning a story instead of memorizing facts about dead men. Ms. Kregness is also possibly a genius, because she knows the answer to literally every question anyone asks, and she answers it very eloquently, like it was just, the answer was sitting at the top of her brain. So that's really cool. She's smart, inspiring and cares about her class and students. Ms. Kregness helped me figure out what I love to do and has inspired me to study history in college, which is something I'll always be grateful for. Thanks, guys. So, I also want to thank my mom and dad, Margaret Rogg and Ben Weisner. They're both very important to me in different ways. My mom listens to me, the other day I called her because I accidentally drank expired almond milk and I was crying, because it was so gross. That's what she's there for. And my dad, my dad makes me laugh and I love hanging out with him. And he took me to see the One Direction movie, so, thanks, Dad. As for college, I was accepted early to my first choice school, which is Tulane in New Orleans. And then I'm also applying to some other schools in the East Coast, and I would like to study history or political science.
We would love to have you all stay, but we understand, so we'll take a five-minute We will now call this meeting back to order. What a wonderful night, but we've lost our audience.
Not all of it.
Yes, not all of it, yes. We will now do our call to order after this wonderful spotlight. At this point, we will go for approval of the agenda, which includes study session topics, the International Student Travel Request, Teaching and Learning Seven Point Plan with Carrie Ross, Park Spanish Immersion Enrollment with Principal Corey Maslowsky, and the Policy Development First and Second Readings for Policy 101, Status of the School District and Policy Second Reading and Policy 410, Equal Education Opportunity. And then our action agenda, the vote on the Policy Development Second Reading and the International Student Travel Approval. We'll then have communications and transmittals and then adjournment. And we are starting off tonight, we need an approval of the agenda, and I'm looking for a motion to approve. Motion first by Ken, second?
Second.
Second by Larry, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, then we have a six-o vote and we will proceed. First item on our, of our study agenda is the, I'm sorry, which? Oh, okay. Is the International Student Travel Request, and our high school social studies are going across the pond again.
Thank you Chairperson Richardson, members of the board and Superintendent Metz. I'm here to introduce Mr. Cohen. He teaches AP European History at the high school and he is here to give us the who, what, when, where and why of a European trip.
Thank you, members of the board, Mr. Metz. I am Jeff Cohen. I've been teaching at the high school four and a half years now, and this is my first year teaching AP European History. And I am very anxious to take some of my students, as you said, over the pond to visit Rome, Florence, London and Paris over spring break. I've put together a pretty nice plan and I think I can put together quite a trip for these kids, given the board's approval.
You've mentioned about four of our favorite cities in the world, so...
There's open spots.
Yeah, good. Any questions for Mr. Cohen? Julie?
There's three general areas that we always want to hear more about your plans for, and one is safety, sort of adults-to-student ratio kind of thing. A second is making sure that all students who want to go have an opportunity to go, like how are you gonna, are you gonna raise funds in a way that will allow students to share in that? And then, student behavior, I guess that kind of goes in with the safety, what plans do you have in that regard? Because our students are all extremely well behaved, but they are students.
Absolutely, I'll take that, those, the kind of the sandwich pieces first, your first and last questions. We actually, the tour company that we're going through offers a six-to-one student-to-chaperon ratio that, right now I have 13 or 14 students signed up. And I have two teachers, myself and Ms. Lindenberg, planning on going, as well as a parent, a parent of one of the students, actually, the younger sister of one of the young ladies who is honored here tonight. So we'd have three adults for 13 or 14 students. So that, it's an extremely, I think, safe and good ratio of adults to students. You know, there's, every student that would possibly be going are good students, they're very, very conscientious. The behavior piece is not one of my concerns, it really isn't. They're good kids and we'll definitely take care of them. The equity piece, it's a small group, this isn't like an orchestra trip, you know, where everybody is, or most people are required to go or expected to go. It's very, it's an optional type of a deal, there's, as you can tell by the number of students going, it's a pretty small group. It's open to anybody who would like to go, who's interested in AP Euro. I have students both in my class now, as well as former students who didn't maybe get to go in the previous couple of years, all interested in going. There are fundraising opportunities available. That's, that's really, that's it.
Any other questions? Okay, we do appreciate, these trips are a great opportunity for our students, obviously as representatives of St. Louis Park. And again, you've seen the students here tonight. Behavior is not something we think about, but what is it? We always verify. And so that's why we think that ratio is so important. And we obviously do not expect any incidents, at the same time, we expect that to be very closely monitored also. So, thank you, Jeff, we appreciate that. Next item on our agenda is Teaching and Learning, a seven-point plan, and this is by the Director of Teaching and Learning, Carrie Ross. And Carrie will present, and Rob, would you like to introduce this?
While Carrie is making her way to the podium, we were looking for a time to sneak in a quick announcement, and that is, the school district has, in the past, received something called an I-III grant, it's really a school improvement grant from the federal government. And we learned this week that we have received a second I-III grant. It's going to be publicized more in the very near future, but the goal of the I-III grant that we just were notified we will receive, is to expand the ninth grade bar program that we have here at this high school into many more high schools across the country. So I just wanted to take a moment to make that quick announcement, the community and the board will hear much more about that grant in the coming days, while Carrie was setting up. And a perfect lead into Carrie Ross, Carrie is our Director of Teaching and Learning, she's new to St. Louis Park this year, and she's gonna give us a quick report on what she's been up to since she arrived.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, colleagues and community members, it's my pleasure to be here tonight. It seems appropriate that we're talking about teaching and learning on the same night that we're honoring the National Merit Scholar, so, that was really, really a nice fit. Since I've been here for the last few months, my charge has been to support the work of the district leadership, and one of our priorities is closing the achievement gap. So my first slide that I have for you tonight is just a quick review of some information that you might have seen previously, about how all of us on the cabinet level have shared responsibilities on specific aspects of what it takes to close the achievement gap. I know that's kind of hard to read, but it is complicated work. You'll see that teaching and learning on the second line has many aspects that is connected to closing the achievement gap. And some of those I'm gonna outline for you tonight in the, in the seven-point plan that Rob mentioned. One of the first things that we talked about this fall was what is the responsibilities of the Director of Teaching and Learning? Basically, anything that has to do with curriculum and instruction, supporting teachers and kids. And as we heard from the students that spoke tonight, we have a lot of fabulous staff here in St. Louis Park, and we pride ourselves in making relationships with kids and making meaningful learning opportunities with, for kids. That doesn't mean that we can rest on our laurels, we have continuous work that we need to do, to always strive to better meet the needs of kids. And the teaching and learning focus of that is coordinating that work, to give schools, to give teachers, give administrators support to link the work that they do together. And in many aspects, that work has been very, people have been very committed to that work, but very localized in terms of school-based, where there hasn't been somebody in this position previously to coordinate that effort across schools and help create common language and common outcomes. So, to start with, we're outlining this seven-point plan. One of our first orders of business is to conduct a curriculum audit, to ensure that our teaching practices and our program delivery and our student outcomes meet the needs of all of our students, that we have a clear understanding of what grade level means and what expectations are at each course level. We've started the audit, we're nearly complete with the first round. Today was the last meeting with our elementary staff. This, later this week, we'll meet with both the language arts departments and the math departments at the middle school and the high school. And we'll be doing this work K-12 across the spectrum, developing a process for not only having common language, but also having a common understanding of what outcomes would be for, for students. The next part, number two, would be organizing for change, to know that our instruction and our interventions and the systems that we have in place might need to be changing and adapting to ensure that we're responsive to the needs of students. We're already working on that in many ways, we've established some collaborations across general education teachers and special education teachers already, and we continue to strengthen those common bonds. And we are all in service to students, so we want to make sure that we are working together and organizing ourselves in a, in a way that coordinates our efforts to make a more jointed experience for students. Number three is about building the capacity of the educators in our district to intentionally plan and ensure student success. We've already started some training for our reading intervention teachers at the elementary level, secured some materials for some of our reading intervention teachers, and... level, secured some materials for some of our reading intervention teachers, and next week, we are working with our gifted and talented education teachers across the K-12 spectrum to evaluate the gifted and talented services that we offer for students in the district. Number four is creating systems that build understanding of common expectations so that we know that fourth grade expectations are the same or similar in every elementary school and that we can be assured that students have common experiences and rigorous expectations and that we structure our school day to meet the needs of our students regardless of how they come to us, to meet their needs, whether they're on grade level, below grade level, or above grade level, we have mechanisms in place to support those students. Number five is important, to continue to share our results with stakeholders and solicit input and feedback. This includes the DPAC committee being here with you tonight and various PTA's and PTO organizations that also provide us input and parent phone calls too, which I always appreciate, I get lots of those and those are always, always welcome. Number six is implementing a district-wide plan for professional development and creating systems to support our learners. As you might have heard, December 6th is our next early release day and we're planning on bringing the whole district together to re, to talk again about the branding of our St. Louis Park schools and how we can all affect change this school year and going forward to more strategically and intentionally close that achievement gap. And the last one, which is hard to see on your screen, is engaging all stakeholders and foster partnerships and collaborations to maximize the support and expertise that we have in our community and in our schools, because we do consider it all of our responsibility to help close the achievement gap. That's a really quick version of the seven-point plan. There is a, kind of an outline for the timeline of this work for this year in broad terms. It's really a lot of process work this year, we'll be creating documents and collecting data and, and at various strategic points along the way, but it's really just the beginning of a continuous improvement cycle and we're starting with English Language Arts and Mathematics because that is an area that we know that we have great opportunity and that we have great accountability to our students and our families. So we're starting there.
Any questions, Joe?
So, when, when will we hear from you next? Are, are we as the board, part of the shares results portion, are we gonna hear more specifics about what you're doing in the spring?
I'm happy to come back to you in the spring or even before. As we can fin, as we finish this first round of the audit in November, we'll have some preliminary data. We're actually planning on meeting with principals at the end of November, beginning of December, to start being more strategic about building wide opportunities for this school year and I'm happy to report back progress as you like throughout the school year. If you want to hear more regularly than once a year, that's, that's certainly a great idea.
Ken?
Sure. In addition to that question, a little more depth, do you have plans to do like road shows or something? You had mentioned the DPAC and PTOs and other communities that are highly interested in some of this data and some of these directions that you'll be taking. Do you have any plans or will you be putting plans together to meet with them on a regular basis or do on a road show or something?
A road show's an interesting idea. I think I might have to plan a routine that goes along with that or a song and dance. Might have to get the theater group to back me up. I think we, I think that we are on the docket to visit every PTA or PTO within the next four months and DPAC, but we could certainly put together something more strategic and more intentional and share that data in a more meaningful way. Our kickoff is really December 6th with the staff that we have here within the district when we bring them all together in the school auditorium that afternoon and we have plans to record that, so we could also bring that forward too as part of the road show.
I don't have a question, but just want to express my appreciation for, you're looking at these issues systemically across our schools, both horizontally and vertically, because we've got great pockets of excellence, we've got a lot of good things going on, but we're never gonna be a great district for all students at all times unless we really do this kind of work, so I'm, I'm glad the superintendent made this decision and that you were selected and engaged in this work, because I think it's gonna pay off for us immensely and look forward to hearing the future reports.
I did have one more question and that was about the professional learning communities.
So, are, do you have any visions on what that would look like in the future, so they're more uniformed across schools and can you talk about that at all?
That's actually a great question. This, we are required to have a district professional learning committee that directs the work of individual schools and their professional learning committees and that's actually a topic that they've taken up. We're meeting for the third time next week and defining PLCs and offering some structure for schools for PLCs that still allow them the flexibility to meet the needs of their school. PLCs might look a little bit different at the high school than they do at an elementary, for example, but giving a common structure and a common purpose for the PLCs is something that we will have in place this year. The, the district-wide committee has taken that up as one of their big challenges to help support their colleagues with this, this year, because they feel that that's really a need.
I want to echo Julie's words. We are delighted that you are here. When we hired Superintendent Metz, it was, the goal of the board is to make sure we close this gap. And I know he has given you the charge, I know he's given it to the principals and we want to work it down through the entire, to every person in this school district to make sure they understand that this gap is to be closed. We have done an excellent job, our graduation rates are among the highest in the state, but we're not done yet.
Right.
And so we, we consider this initiative absolutely crucial and making sure that that goal is aligned. When we attempted to do a balanced scorecard, as we called it in our measurements, I think we got a little, little too wide and not quite deep enough and I think this is exactly the thing we need, to put the focus of the entire district on this, to make sure that that growth occurs for all our students. And again, thank you, Carrie, for being here.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Park Spanish Immersion enrollment.
My name is Linda Stanley and I am the Student Data Specialist for the district and this is Dr. Corey Mislowsky, the Principal at Park Spanish Immersion. We're here to report on the results that policy 545, Park Spanish Immersion Admissions Policy, had on enrollment at PSI. Policy was originally adopted in October of 2002 and reviewed and changed in March of This is the process for kindergarteners for this current school year, 2013, 14. There were 501 potential kindergarteners for the school year. 159 from Aquila, 158 from Peter Hobart, and 184 from Susan Lindgren. Lotteries were held in February for St. Louis Park resident students, open enrolled students, and Choices Yours students this year. Admission of St. Louis Park students included 33 students that resided in the Aquila attendance area, 23 students from Peter Hobart, and 27 students from the Susan Lindgren attendance The enrollment at PSI for kindergarten, we started out with 20 students from the designated seats. This is based on federal free reduced lunch subsidy. Educational benefits were completed by families to determine their eligibility. 30 siblings of St. Louis Park resident students attending PSI, one open enrollment student, 33 students from the St. Louis Park lottery, four students of staff, and four students in the Choices Yours program. There were 165 applications received by the deadline of February 8th this year. Again, 20 of the students from those designated areas, the 30 siblings and 33 from the lottery. We started out with 82 students on the St. Louis Park waitlist and as of now, we have 48 students that remain on that waitlist.
So, clarification here, so that, is it 33 that are chosen from the lottery out of 165 or 33 out of 115? Are you, is it, are those designated areas, the siblings subtracted?
You'd take, out of 115.
Out of 115, okay.
First, we take the students from the designated seats and then we do siblings and then we do a lottery for the students that remain.
Got it. I just wanted to make sure that the, that the applications meant all of those versus it being applications in the lottery, so, okay, thank you.
We received 42 open enrollment applications this year. One sibling was taken under open enrollment, four students of staff residing outside of St. Louis Park, and four students from the Choices Yours program. And we have 33 students that are on the open enrollment waitlist. Yep?
Could you explain the sibling from the open enrollment? I know one of the policies, how did that occur?
The policy is we take one open enrollment student and we give preference if there is a sibling in the school first through fifth, first through fourth grade. So...
So this is a sibling of the one open enrollment student?
Well, we had several, we had, of all the open enrollment that apply, we take one. So we take everybody from open enrollment that has a sibling and we have a lottery for that space. And so that's how that would, that comes about.
And that connects with, that's because of the laws about complying with open enrollment?
Correct. We need to take one student.
Looks like Corey's, yeah.
You need, you have to be able to take one in, in each school, at least?
Yeah, it's 1%.
Okay. And our policy has changed, if you are in the district and then you move out, then you, even though your kid is already there, you don't have a sibling preference.
You are open enrolled at that point and so there is no sibling preference. Where it's, it used to be an automatic. This shows the waitlisted students since 2002. They are, it's going up slightly, but it's not a significant number. Open enrollment waitlist has been going down, but we aren't getting as many applications and part of that is, as they found out, there is no sibling preference, some of them aren't applying, and there are other programs in the surrounding area that they can go to. This shows the waitlist and the outcomes of students that are on that waitlist and this year, out of the waitlisted students, 54 of them are attending a St. Louis Park school, either PSI, Aquila, Peter Hobart, or Susan Lindgren. And then we have tracked to see how many are going other places, non-public, open enroll out of the district, or kids that, from February on, we just don't know where they've gone to. So quite a few of them are staying, they're not leaving.
So it looks like about 33% of the kids that enroll that go somewhere else, approximately, right?
On the waitlist?
Yep, on their waitlist, about 33% of them decide not to wait and go somewhere else. I did the math, so...
Did you? Okay. I can't do it that fast on a T.
It's still, it's still a really good, a good number that stay in after they, they get on the waitlist and get, apply in, actually go to one of the other elementary schools here, which is nice.
Yeah, you know, we have 11 of them open enrolled out, but that happens every year. They can get, they get into a charter, the charter school, they can get into Minnetonka, that sort of thing, so. And this is, just shows the progression of students from attendance area that go to PSI every year. It's pretty even across from year to year, the, you know, the number of possible students and how many students from each area are attending PSI. This is a socioeconomic status at PSI as it stood at the end of the school year last year, in June. And as you can see, from kindergarten through second grade, the numbers are quite a bit higher. Third grade was the year that the new seats came in, the new designated seats, and it's not quite as high as kindergarten, first and second, but it's quite a bit higher than fourth and fifth. So it's showing how that new policy did affect enrollment at the school.
And, to that one, I had a couple of notes. So theoretically, in the next four years, you guys are gonna be about 20% diverse.
That's what we're hoping.
Right? And, I, this is an odd question for you, Corey.
Okay.
But, so when that happens, what do you feel are gonna be the next steps for PSI, for the community? Because you'll be about 20% diverse at that, at that point.
Yeah, one of the things that we'll talk about are, that I'll mention later, is that annually, this group meets and there, there's a committee per the policy that meets to, to look at the, at the policy. And so, at that point, or you know, even before, a recommendation could come before the board as to, you know, maybe it's a change in the, the number of seats that, in that pocket. So that, that could be a possibility in the future.
You mean in preseason or what do you say?
Yeah, so, so like, you'll see in the, in the coming slides, you know, at PSI over the past several years, the numbers have gone up for socioeconomic status considerably from where it was several years ago. We're, we're still lower, obviously, than the three elementary schools, so that number could be relooked at in the future as far as seats that are, are set aside.
Yeah, that's, I was talking about.
Perfect.
But we also need to keep in mind that just changing PSI will not, even if you push the numbers up to 50, 40% or whatever it is, it still wouldn't balance out the, the diversity or the inequalities that are throughout this district, which is understandable and we just can't do that. But it's, it's doing a great, going in a great direction. I'd like to know how or get to feel from you, how that is feeling in the school, amongst the teachers and the population as a whole.
Yeah.
As it starts becoming a little different from what you're in the past, accustomed to.
Sure, I could speak to that. I, I'm surrounded by fantastic people that work on the staff and fantastic parents at all of our grade levels who really want to do the right thing on behalf of the 510 kids that are enrolled. And so over the past couple of years, we've seen some of our staff, you know, when we went from 7% free reduced lunch to 20 or more percent, that, that it was a different way of thinking, different way of teaching, and so we're continuing... of thinking, different way of teaching, and so we're continuing to look at ourselves as learners, and differentiating within our classroom, continuing to bring in people to work with us to just become better teachers. And so whether or not, you know, regardless of the free reduced lunch percentage, that's something we would continue to do. However, it's, it's become all that much more apparent that we want to continue to ensure that we're engaging all of our families, engaging all of our kids.
You know, one of the issues and concerns is, you know, is with mobility, especially this program, and it looks, by the numbers, that they're holding for a few years. And also, given the mobility within the metro area, but also the popularity of immersion programs, there's a way to maybe capture kids who come from other communities that, so they don't lose, you know, what they're starting, either here or in other communities, that we need to, maybe we need to work with our neighbors a little bit more as populations move and change, that we make sure that we're getting these kids, and they're not missing out then on the English they need, and if they transition into another immersion program or something. And I don't know if you've had any of those discussions, or what your thoughts are about that, on how mobility is involved in this picture.
Yeah, you know, people move for a variety of reasons, and for the most part, we've seen quite a bit of stability over the past couple of years in particular. We do have openings at a few grade levels, which I'll mention as an advertisement at the end. And, you know, so as people are coming from other immersion schools, that's, we definitely want them to take a look at us, as they're moving in our community, or students that are bilingual, especially at the upper grades.
And this shows the progression at PSI. This is school-wide, showing the percentages of free and reduced lunch students, starting out, you know, at 4.5%. And then in 2004, 2005, there was an outreach push to try and recruit students from low-income areas within St. Louis Park. And it sort of worked a little, but not great. And then in 2019, with the new designated seats, where it's very specific, they have to fill out the federal form, you see that those numbers really went up, and it really made a difference at the school and at the demographics there. And so this shows the percentages of free and reduced lunches at all four elementary Aquila is the highest, Peter Hobart is not that far, and Susan Lindgren is pretty close to Peter Hobart. So, you know, the changing of the schools and the changing of the boundaries really helped to bring things together more. And this is special ed percentages at each school. They're just kind of pretty similar across, there's not any great differences. And these are students that have limited English proficiency, and the number at PSI has gone up a little bit. We're getting more students that need help with English along with learning Spanish, so just the change in demographics is changing that piece, too. And this is a comparison of demographics, it's a percentage, and the, the blue is the minorities, and minorities, we're basing it on state guidelines, so it's American Indian, Alaskan Native, Asian, Pacific Islanders, Hispanic, and blacks make up the minority. And it just shows the differences at the four schools. And now turn it over to Dr. Masowski.
Thank you, Lynda. You always do a nice job of pulling that data together and board. I know that you have additional information in your packets. So I just wanted to walk through quickly a couple of things. The last major review that was done was in 2010. At that point, the Choices Yours program increased from three students to four students. As Lynda mentioned, there are 20 seats that are reserved for students qualifying for the federal lunch subsidy, and those spots are now held until two weeks before school starts. Prior to this revision in 2010, if there weren't 20 spots at that, at the moment that the lottery was done, then it went back to the other general lottery. And so that's one of the things that I attribute to having a much higher percentage over the last several of years, so that's been a fantastic addition to the policy. And then if there are seats that are still open two weeks before, then that goes back to the general lottery, and the next people on the waitlist are called. And then sibling preference only for those students residing in St. Louis Park, and that would be guaranteed sibling preference. And our review committee meets regularly, the last time that we met was in 2012. I'd like to just walk you through lateral entry of students. As a public school, when we, per school policy, when we have openings, we want to make the best fit for the parents. We always want to set students up for success, and so either Lynda at grades K and 1, because those are the spots that are from the initial lottery that's held at and during, or before the kindergarten year. Lynda gives us the list of students for the next people on the list, and so the number that we've determined is when we drop below 87, and the reason is 87 is because that way, when we get to third grade, when we collapse from four sections to three sections, then it's about 29 students a class, 29, 30 students a class. So we, even though we may start higher than that 87, we wait until it drops below 87, just so that we're more in line with, with some of the other schools. And then also, that gives us a good cohort of students going up to the middle school. And then for grades two through five, when we do have openings, that we, you know, contact parents and say, the next person on the waitlist, would you like to come in? I always give a tour to the families. We, we meet with a grade level teacher of that grade, and do, just do a quick assessment as far as reading, writing, speaking, listening, math, have them do, do a few things, and then we talk with the parents about, you know, in comparison to the other students at this grade level, this is, this is about where the student would be, I know, what questions do you have? But it's not, it's not a yes or a no, it's just a discussion with the families, and to let them know what their options are. And ultimately, it's parents' decision at that point. And we currently have openings at grades one, three, and four. Lynda is working on updating the first grade list that was from their initial lottery. And I'd like to talk with you, too, about a couple of new initiatives that we have going over the past couple of years for new families. And one thing that we saw is that when you have a population that's been together for a period of time, and then one or two new students move in, for example, last year, not, not this past school year, but the, or the school that we're currently in, but last year, we added 12 students at a variety of grade levels. And so for those two new fourth grade students, for example, with the two openings, you know, that they're, sometimes it's difficult to break into a new school, and, and so we've made some outreaches with the PTO. We now have a new buddy program, and it's voluntary, but for families that have been there before, and for new families, that they have someone that they can call, they're calling them up and inviting them to different initiatives and to different programs we have going on, you know, what questions do you have about the acronyms that are floating around, just as another friendly face. And then our school counselor also meets with all of the new students at grades higher than kindergarten, and has, has lunch with them, allows them to invite a friend, just as a way of welcoming them to our school, too.
Cory.
Ken.
That is a very, very good program that you guys have in place, and I was also thinking, we've talked about it before, moving it on to other schools, because it is a difficult transition to come into a new school and, and work your way into different groups of people. How is that, is that, they were going to present that to the D-PAC?
Yeah.
And see how that would work in other schools? Is that something that you guys are thinking about still?
Yeah, I think that'd be fantastic. We're in our first year of it right now, and we actually had a meeting tonight before, before this meeting, we had about 300 people show up for our math night, and we had a presenter, and it was fantastic. I've got pictures, I'll show you later. But we had, it was fantastic, and right before that meeting, or the, the event, we had a buddy program where people showed up, and, and that was the first official meeting, face-to-face in a large group. And so I know that our PTO would be more than happy to present that at D-PAC. And outreach, I just wanted to let you know, part of the reason that the ELL population continues to increase is that over the past couple of years, we've been offering ELL support. Prior to, four years ago, we didn't offer any ELL support. We currently have a point-two FTE for the students that are there, and we start in kindergarten for students that do not speak English as a first language, so continue to provide that support. We, as of, this is our third year that a PTO member and I give a monthly tour throughout the building, so the dates are published, people can call. Prior to that, that tours weren't given out regularly, and so this is another way of allowing people to know about the school, whether they're interested, you know, and sometimes I have people with students in utero, I have, I have, you know, people calling up from the community, you know, grandparents, or they heard about it, and so they come on a tour and kind of learn more about the school. So we've been doing that, and then visiting, continuing to visit other places within St. Louis Park, and letting people know about our school and about the program. And, for example, last year, I went to Meadowbrook twice, and that was fruitful. We definitely, I had some good conversations with families, and several, several families enrolled. And so, you know, I think it's continuing to let people know about what their options are, and continuing to build upon the success that we've had over the past couple of years. So thank you for your continued support. Any other questions?
Great, no, just thank you both, Lynda, fabulous job as always, give us all the information we need and hit all the points, and appreciate what's going on there. Thanks.
Thank you.
I want to add to Jim's thanks. It was very interesting, I thought, when we were on the, as candidates, we were at the League of Women Voters, and the question came up, you know, what about this school, PSI, that's a private school within the St. Louis Park public schools? And quite frankly, I was a little bit surprised by the question. Years ago, I thought that was a significant issue, but Cory, looking at these numbers, you have made significant progress, and I think the district and our teachers, the people at PSI have made significant strides in helping us to balance the district and PSI, there are a lot of numbers that were put out there tonight, but as you look at the, the different schools with the percentages of minority students, as Ken mentioned, we're not totally balanced yet, but we've made significant progress. And so when the question was asked, and because PSI was my school for the last year, I was just, the humor of the board was not lost on me, by the way, but I, I was very, I was a little bit taken aback by the question, because we have made so much progress. It is, it is not a private school within the public school system. It is at 27% minority enrollment, and compared to 30s and 40s in one school at 50, but it's, it is holding its own, and the progress that Dr. Masowski has made is excellent. And I want to, Cory, I want to commend you for that, and thank you for the progress that you've made.
Thank you. I have a great staff. Have a good night.
Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is policy development, first reading, legal status of the school district, and a second reading on equal educational opportunity. And Dr. Metz, do you want to address that one?
I certainly could, and Cindy, you want to take over for me? You're waving at me.
I'm waiting in the wings, Superintendent Metz, so. The policy that's brought before the board tonight as a first reading is legal status of the school district. This is another one that MSBA recommends the school board review every year. There are no changes, except for, I think there's one flip-flop of a "it is" or "it's", something to that effect, I don't, but that, there's no content change in the request for first reading.
And Bruce, I think the, the other policy is family medical leave. It's different.
Yes, that, that's correct. The...
It's coming up, that's coming up for a second reading, the 410.
That's the one that is for the second reading. It's the family medical re, leave is the second reading tonight. So any questions or comments on either of these two? Okay, none appearing. We'll move on with the action agenda. The second reading tonight is on the family and medical leave, and we will vote on that as presented. The board has that, has had that for two weeks, or for two meetings, so on the second reading, we will vote on it tonight, looking for a motion to approve. Moved by Larry, second.
Second.
It is recommended that the board approve the second reading of policy, 410, family and medical leave as presented. Any further discussion? None appearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Okay, 6-0 vote. Next is on the international student travel approval. It is recommended that the board approve the spring 2014 international travel request for the high school AP history students as presented. Looking for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Jim, second.
Second.
Second by Ken. Any further discussion?
Just, just two comments. One is that a trip I took to Europe in high school is one of the formative experiences of my life, so I do think these are really important, and I just want to thank our teacher, Mr. Cohen, for sticking through this entire meeting to hear what we say at the end. We appreciate his dedication to our students.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, no. 6-0 vote. Last item on our agenda is communications and transmittals, and I would be remiss if I didn't begin by recognizing Karen Waters, our newest school board member who is in our, in our audience this evening. Karen, welcome. We will bring you onto the board in January, and thank you for being here tonight, and we look forward to that. We are losing Larry, and we'll say more about him in January, too. Any other comments? Julie.
Yeah, tonight has been about students. We've spent about three-quarters of our evening talking, first to some of the youngest students, and then to some of our oldest, and so I want to go back to some of the youngest. And the Star Tribune, in their last Saturday's paper, had the winners of essay, essay writers, young essay writers who wrote about how they make a difference. And as I read through them, it was the top 10, there was a winner and nine runners-up, and one of the runners-up is one of our Peter Hobart fourth graders. Trevor Piehl, or Peehl, I'm sorry, I should have found out how to pronounce his last name, P-I-E-H-L, but it's a really short essay, and I thought it was wonderful if I could read it. Trevor wrote that, "It's not hard to get along with kids that aren't exactly like you. I have three best friends, and we all have different religions. I am Christian, Zeke is Jewish, and Hassan and Al-Sani are Muslim. We love hanging out together anyway. Once I had a snack with Zeke, another time I went to Hassan and Al-Sani's mosque where we had to take our shoes off. When we all eat pizza together at my house, we don't order sausage or pepperoni because my friends can't eat pork. Even though we're different, we're still best buds." And he ends with an exclamation mark. And I just thought that was wonderful to have one of our students. I don't know if it was a school project, and there were lots of other essays submitted, but all of them were delightful, and I was pleased that St. Louis Park was there, and that it was a particularly, particularly relevant story by Trevor. So his picture is one of these kids, and congratulations to him.
Thanks, Julie. Joe?
I've got two things. So first, going back to the election, I'd like to congratulate our current colleagues, Bruce Richardson and Jim Yarosh, for their reelection. I look forward to working with those guys for another couple of years. And, you know, I think the other thing we need to do is to thank the community for the support of the three referendum questions that passed with overwhelming support. I told people my political prognostications are sometimes right, sometimes wrong. I predicted the school board election order perfectly. I thought we'd, and then I thought we'd get a... I thought we'd, and then I thought we'd get about 60 percent on the referendum, and I was way off. We got 75 percent on all three questions. It was great support. We don't take that support for granted. Our new superintendent was out there talking to everybody who would listen about it. I really appreciate that. I appreciate all the community, community members who welcomed, welcomed him in and heard, heard the spiel. And, you know, for the vote yes committee who worked so hard to, to get those, those items passed. They're very important to us. We've talked about them quite a bit, and, yeah, we don't, we don't take that support for granted. The other thing I want to mention is in the time flies category, we'll be talking about this many times, I think, in the next few meetings. I received this in the mail. It's a save the date card for PSI Immersion Education Night on December 3, and Kindergarten Information Night on December 10. I believe tonight was the original date for the information night. I believe that's on the school calendar. So if you're listening to me now and are upset because you went tonight, we apologize. But we did get it out there that, that that date has changed, and that was based on some conversations, I think, with MDE about all-day kindergarten. So we need to get that settled and worked through. I'm sure we'll have more discussions about that. But I just wanted to bring that up for those of you who have also received this. My first kid, Eli, is in this class, so that is the time flies part of it.
Thank you, Joe. Ken?
There's something, I don't believe it's in the calendars. I looked through it. But Aquila has their Family Fun Read Night on Thursday. I do believe it is 7 o'clock. My daughter's going to kill me, but I, it's, I'll be there, whatever it is. But it's Aquila Family Fun Read Night. Everybody's invited. The mayor usually comes out and reads. And I think Julie will be there reading, too. So, and a lot of the community members will be there. Police, fire department, all that great things. So come out and be there.
Great. Anyone else? I'd like to wrap it up tonight. Again, I echo Joe's words.
Community, thank you.
Thank you. The bond rating improvement that we received from our community, it was huge. Three to one, this referendum passed. It was the highest pass rate in the state, except for some little town out west somewhere that didn't happen to pass one with like 80 percent or something like that. So, but three to one is absolutely fantastic. I think it does another thing, and that is confirms our selection of Mr. Metz as our superintendent. No one could have worked harder than he did in getting out to the community. What a great opportunity to put Rob out there in front of people and show exactly what he can do. And he's just a wonderful example for our students, principals, and teachers, and we're very proud of that, Rob. Finally, the vote yes committee. What a great group. They just did amazing things out there. And I'm still driving around, you know, usually the lawn signs are down on the next day. And as I still drive around and see that white lawn sign with the three check marks for vote yes, they're victory signs is what they are. And we're very proud of that. We're proud of this community, and I'm extremely proud of that committee. What a great job they did. They will be here at our next spotlight. We will honor them. And again, we thank you for the great work that they did. Staff, thank you for the great work that you did also. And for our teachers who were there telephoning, we had principals telephoning. It was just a wonderful outpouring of support for what we were doing. I'm sorry, I missed. Yes, Julie reminded me, they were there in their private role as citizens of our community. And of course, none of us do this as part of our official role. But now the committee is, has its work completed. And again, we're very proud of the work that they did. So we'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Jim, second by Joe. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. 6-0 vote. We are adjourned. Good night, everybody.